Good evening, we're gonna call to order the committee of the whole Fort Daniel Boone area school district's school board meeting. Today is Monday, November 11th at 7:30 PM Eastern Time. And we'll start with our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Father, and to the Father in his name, I declare my resignation.
We'll call Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mr. Scott. Ms. Albright.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mr. P. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Wolf, here. Mr. Raffigan.
Here.
Solbs.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Pete Price.
All right, procedures for public participation are in the back page of the agendas. If you'd like to come up and address the board, just come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. We do have some agenda edits. Looks like six under Finance, six H and I. The dollar amounts are adjusted. Does everybody have this? Yep. Any other agenda edits requested by the board members? No? Okay. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel issues. Any public comment on the agenda? First item under Finance. Item six. And again, H and I are, the dollar amounts are amended.
Mr. Raffigan, no questions. I prepared Mr. McGee for possible questions regarding, I, disappointing.
Well, I do have a couple.
It's 'cause it went down.
Yeah.
If it had gone up, he'd have been diving in.
He would have had three questions at 38, and I was only going to 20.
No, I do have a few questions, actually. There you go. Is that just ahead of my list?
Yeah, go for it.
Under item B are, I'm sorry, B is my important, I can't use it anymore. I'm sorry, I wrote it down here. Item C for the, are elevators. Did we have this in place already? I can't remember us having a phone monitoring company.
I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Hurley as to answer for that.
I know he does not.
So where did you put the phone up, where did it go?
I don't know where. So, we discovered that after an incident, and so that's why we have that.
So I think it said something in there where, so we have to, we have to get those phones tied into the company or something like that, a little monitor, we have to get, make sure those phones actually go somewhere. We're supposed to, I guess, check on that on a regular basis, right?
That what it will do is it will go somewhere, like our alarm system, and then we're notified with that.
So we...
But we are gonna actually have somebody actually check it to make sure it works on a regular basis.
Okay. So we weren't checking them at all before, I assume?
First instance, by knowledge of what happened there.
Elevator repair company, does an annual check that?
I would think.
Yeah, I do, our elevators are, by happenstance, I happen to know our elevators are inspected yearly.
Yeah, they are. I know the elevators themselves are serviced every year.
They wouldn't check that.
I can't believe we didn't check that.
Obviously, from that one incident, everything's okay?
Yeah, everything's good.
Next item was, I did have, or so, are we having another discussion about the community park at facilities this month? Do we have a recommendation yet, or is that...
Well, the recommendation is move forward with putting together the agreement. I know that there were some questions that you had posed in that last email, and I guess I was looking for some direction on how to proceed, whether the board would like me to go back and see if the township wanted to look at the suggestions you had with the Diamond Tex.
I mean, I don't think that's what it's commenting, so, now, I just know from past experience, that the township used to buy, used to buy the infield mix or the Diamond Tex, they would act, they would go pick it up and dump it for us, or not us, but they would, they would do it to the entire, entire, all the fields of township. So, yeah, they're making an offer to do that, I don't think that that's anything new, I think that's just what they've always done, but it's been years since I was on the park boards, maybe I'm incorrect, but that's usually what they, what they deal with.
Well, I know your question regarding, an email regarding the, the taking care of the fields was something that is just, although it may not have been an agreement, it was one of those past practice items that our former facilities individual have done.
Right, and, you know, again, typically, a lot of it's like, I mean, like in the summertime, we're not using those fields, and typically, the associations that would use them are the ones that would drag the fields in line.
And they, and they, those organizations will still drag them, they will line them, take care of them, the part that, the part that the district will...
In the agreement, it says we're responsible, so make sure we're, you know, they don't come in and say, well, here it says you're doing, so why should we question these?
But we can certainly be specific in the agreement on what that taking care of looks like as far as making sure that they're suitable, in other words, not, we're free of weeds, free of debris, and have the appropriate Diamond Tex.
Yeah, I mean, workers want to be out there taking care of the...
Correct.
So, I mean, that's fine, the field should need to be shaved as far as that's concerned, especially, you know, getting line and dragging and all that, and be sure that they're pushing down and all that stuff.
Typically, the organization, that's stupid.
Wasn't there, wasn't there something about the labor materials as well?
They, they did agree that the sled all, they did make sure.
Is it, is part of the agreement, I think I asked this before, is part of the agreement also having a defined process for how the fields and the, how the revenue is collected for the usage of the, of the park space? Because in the past, I know that some of the youth organizations and some of the, you know, the folks who come, use the facilities for events, some of them will go directly to the township, some of them will come to the school, and apparently, the pricing's different depending on where you go, and like who's, who collects, like is there, is there any defined process for the, for the, not only the collection of the revenue, but who gets it?
So, as far as my understanding, as far as fees go, I mean, it is, it is township property, so any fees generated would sugar the township, and we're responsible for maintenance in our licensed area, which gives us a priority field usage. So, if an organization came in and said, we, we're blocking one of these fields, and we need it for games, we could say, eh, we need to work, you know, either we can try work around this, or, you know, you know, that's our field for, for our usage at that time, you know, so, so that, but any, any fee generated would, would go to the township.
And that, I, it's fine, as long as, I'm just saying there, I don't know that there's a defined process, like how, who collects it, who's responsible for paying it, who, you know, and if the fees are all going to the township, why aren't they collecting them? And then as far as the scheduling of the space, my understanding is that there's two schedules. There's one the township has, and there's one that we have. And I don't know who, you know, I'm assuming there's some sort of inventory at some point, and they sync up, but like that...
I don't believe that the township uses our, our scheduling software, but the township has been doing scheduling.
My understanding is, is our director of athletics and activities works with that scheduler over at the township for the use and scheduling of those fields. Now, as far as the fees, with, with what Mr. Raffigan has indicated, they're the ones that are collecting them. The township.
No, I don't believe that they, they charge any, at least, again, this is my past knowledge, we did not charge for any, any usage, it was, you know, in exchange for them, for the associations maintaining those fields, they can have to use them, it was in exchange for any fee charged. However, there was discussion in the past, I don't know if it's changed, but when these large corporations, they make thousands of dollars, he said, well, you know, the township should be getting some of that, but I don't know if they, if they ever, if they ever did pose a fee for those types of costs. Could we make arrangements to be able to post our own charges? They're big money makers.
I mean, we should. I just know that, you know, if somebody wants to use facilities, it's not an easy process.
Right.
And that, you know, and that's at the time.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the organizations, when they use, they would submit, do their requests, they would say, field, field one from April 1st through October 31st, and just blanket, and, and, you know, and when they use it, it's not, it's just a complete, complete blanket, that's our field, and...
That's what I'm saying, like, there's gotta be a way, but anyway.
I have a question on I page. What is the board docs?
It's a program. And here, I didn't see the computers.
Oh, the Chromebooks, yeah.
Is that a purchase?
Uh, yes, that would be a one-time, one-time purchase.
I just didn't see it on there as far as dollars, or, it was up to $3,000?
Yes.
Is for the board's usage at the time of meeting, per meeting.
Yeah, board docs, board docs is a program that the board would use to allow for this, the whole process to be electronic as far as managing the meeting notes, the meeting agendas, the meeting documents, it would alleviate, we're getting to the point where with the Google Docs, you're scrolling through multiple layers of 150 documents to support what the agenda's indicating, where board docs, board docs attaches right to it in that software program, that it's very, very easy to navigate, support, to make the electronic platform.
Everybody would get Chromebooks?
Yes, every board member would have a Chromebook.
But just, right?
Yes.
We just have it here.
Yes.
They can't take them home?
You just have it here when we're...
Well, I mean, that's something the board would have to decide, whether they want to take them with them, or, or just have the school have them here, and they would have a case be responsible for it, so you can access them at home.
I know if I were on the board, I would want to take it home.
Yeah, you would think so.
And have easy access to them.
It'd be easy access for it.
The docs at home, and you can compare.
Right.
And the board docs allows for you to be able to navigate it in a more user-friendly format other than scrolling through a large Google Doc document.
I actually, board of directors, first I heard you were looking at this.
Well, technology, always good ideas. Good rumors for a while, man. Are we leasing or purchasing those?
Those computers would be purchased, they won't be on a lease, only because of the, it's not as heavy of a use as to put them on a lease, so we'd get a longer life out than what we would with a four-year lease.
That's the basic standard, huh?
Yes.
Because obviously, you know what to call them on.
Correct.
$12 of them, $3,000.
$3,000 for 12 of them, built into the technology budget.
Maintain the software, action.
That's the 2,700.
That's the 2,700 for the board docs, that's all.
And the Chromebooks as well?
That's $3,000, and it's in the, and it's in the budget for technology.
So, so it's 6,700?
3,000 one-time until you have to replace them.
And then it's 2,700 each year for the rest of the application?
Correct.
But the Chrome software, you match.
Yeah, I didn't ask Scott that question, so. I've never used Chrome, or so, but Windows is a whole, I thought they should.
Let me just turn it off.
Paper load, I mean, try to print this off. It's massive.
Mr. Raffigan, any other questions?
So, so, just to, on item G, so we're, we are going to pass the summer budget early this year. I'm up to two lines. You know, I understand why we're passing early, obviously, because it was more turnover and learning, or, importantly, we want to kind of make sure we get a summer budget in place. But I, under, so we're proposing the Act One with exceptions, right?
All options left open, so Act One plus exceptions, whatever they are.
So, I mean, I know every, every year I go on the board, we voted with all the options in place, and we don't know, you know, we don't know what options will be there if, if that, as far as piers or special.
Piers would probably be enough before they calculate that, the chances of us getting piers, it would probably be just special.
My only concern is, you know, I, I asked Miss Sands earlier, and it's actually on the sheet for the Act One index for Boone, the tax on the years, and for this, for this coming year, it's 3.4, which is, which is pretty high. So I, I'd actually be inclined, in theory, to not seek any exceptions to that, because, you know, my mindset, you know, I've always had, had the thought process of, you know, the budget should be somewhere increasing with, in line with inflation, and, you know, inflation has been pretty, pretty reasonable the past, past several years, and if we start increasing it above that, I think that's where we run into issues, and, you know, when we stir the pot, and when those huge increases happen, before you got the index back in mid 2000s, that really, you know, people see their tax bill going up higher than their raises at work, I think that's when, I think that's when people start, you know, saying, you know, what am I really getting for mine? You know, thanks to my bulk of education, so, but my, my other thought process is I don't want to, since it is a whole new work I'm on, I don't want to dictate to them what the shirts are on it, so I'm kind of, I'm the size of the issue here. Just wanted to put it out there.
Where is that?
The, the, this year's? It's actually not on the resolution?
And that was recently proven, or?
Well, so, so we're proving, we're...
It's under the index, it's in the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was back, back a month ago.
About a month ago. It is on here, yeah. See this? Down at the bottom, you have the district index, it is the base index, and then they come back and we adjust it. Our district is 3.1.
So it's gone, it's been 3.1, passed.
2, 3, 1.
3, 2, 3, 1, 3, 1, and that's it.
Does this, this one just, everything that passed since 2001?
Yeah, it's 3, 2. I mean, we've doubled about a percent actually since, since I don't know, I don't know, I had a bunch of, there were two, three, four.
So the one for 19, 20.
Yeah, I was a little...
One for 20, 21, 3, 4.
I think I did, I did three before it gets you, three if you're hunting over.
That's with the exception?
No, that's, that's, that's...
The exception's a couple of topics.
So, you know, I, my, my concern is, okay, whether we get an exception there, and if the board notices, I'm taking it.
Of course, the exception is typically our special education is directly tied to expense.
Well, again, I, I would, I would hope that, not that you need to come from a point where we're calling expenses...
Would it prove that?
Although, you know, we need, we need to look at that number for special ed, I kind of say, I'm flattered that...
It's like a moving target, you know what I mean?
Where was that number, I don't care.
That was number three.
Just trying to take what the past was and that kind of...
Yeah, so, so we're up to 19 percent, and that's just...
I mean, that's across the country.
That's what makes, that's what makes the projections...
Up, up from thirds to 14 percent, that's just, that's amazing.
Nine years ago.
Anyway, so, I don't know, I just, bringing up, that's a conversation, so.
Any public comment on item six Finance? No? All right, item seven, programs, any more discussion? Any questions on item seven, programs? Any public comment on programs? All right, presentations by board members, secretary of coordination.
Nothing to report, Mr. Scott. ECIU? Hi, I know you want to hear some work from you, Scott, so.
Absolutely.
At our last IU meeting, basically approved multiple PAP items, as, I think everybody knows, the, the, I think County IU's in charge of the PAP program, approved some multiple student teaching assignments coming in to the IU in the next few months. Also ratified, and I know Boone's part of that, we ratified several agreements with E+ with the E-School Plus program, as well as we're bringing on several districts that can bring in campus program as well, so, and as the IU basically involves those programs for county, and actually, we're doing, and I think, doing intermediate campus, I believe, for Downingtown, so, interesting, we begin with, out of county districts seeking the IU, the ECIU's expertise in certain areas, so, that's about it for the IU right now. Yeah, my, my last meeting in next week, so, who's the question?
I'll be done.
First career in technology board.
Yes, Mr. Scott, I was on vacation that week, Solbry couldn't make the meeting, so I don't report it. The, the board, JOC does not meet in, in November, so, the next meeting will be in December for the board reforms.
All right. State representatives.
Okay, so, Daniel Boone Primary Center, the Primary Center is continuing the great stops in school year, they are looking forward to hosting Adventure's Day assembly on Monday, which was today. They have also held an evening parent meetings, we played, and that was teach parents strategies on how they can help their children while meeting in Nashville at home. Recently, the Primary Center celebrated their annual fall festival of pumpkin nap day. By Anthony and the Vicky Center, things are speeding up at the elementary school, more and more events are including, and starting out in the month of November. On November 8th, the students at IAC are honoring Adventure's of the Veterans Day event. This event involves the entire school by live in the band and chorus to play music as the veterans walk down the hallway. The students clap to recognize the veterans and their services, and the veterans will speak to the students. The previous week, the students had the fall festival with their activities and games for the new season. Along with this day of fun, the students will participate in spirit week and a fire day. During the fire day, they are fired in Kanan and talked about safety, and that they'll be a gathering in the small house of the students' staff. A new change was implemented, basically, with implementation of security guards. These guards are looking at the cat outside by the buses, and the students now are feeling safe with food as new addition. Students are excited about upcoming events and will advertise the fall shot activity with a winners' cheer to eat. Students at the school are excited about this and want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate. The students of coast won't lose us in your equipment, though overall, all feedback is positive, non-stick responses.
Okay, thank you, Zoe. Before I move into the middle school and the high school, I'd like to briefly just applaud my lack of attendance at the last two meetings. However, I'm glad to be here now after the summer break. In terms of the middle school, as the middle school was entered the second quarter, the students overall seem to feel as though the school year is progressing fairly well. The week of the 13th of October was spirit week for the middle school, which culminated in a pepper rally. The opinions of this were relatively positive, the majority of opinions seeming, seeming to be that it kept in line with previous spirit weeks. The major upcoming event for the middle school is the winter dance, which is scheduled for the second, the second, what, the second, the second of November, and it appears that a fair portion of students at the middle school are excited for the dance, especially as it leads into the upcoming Thanksgiving break. The middle school overall seems to be functioning quite well, and as the district, as the school proceeds into the second quarter, the middle school will likely to continue to have a solid year. For the high school, the high energy levels and progress made has helped the school do many positive things. One such action is the senior class going to the intermediate center to join those students at lunch and recess. The intermediate students and high school students enjoyed playing games, just soccer and kickball together, and it came with a nostalgic feeling for the high school students. The seniors then got to visit their old teachers. Furthermore, the high school is also hosting the Blazer Ball, or the Battles Against Us in Lions, this is the second time that they're conducting this activity, which is an inner school basketball game in which teachers can beat against students. Also, the blood drives are coming up to the high school. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Legislative report?
Mr. Durst.
Yeah. Any other reports from board members? Any public comment on board reports? All right, next item number nine, personnel. Any more discussion?
I assume we're gonna have names for our coaches, issue is going through, is that right?
I don't know if you have the two, they're interviewing, I don't know if it's been signed.
Yeah, they're still in the process.
We have, I have some, we have some.
There's some in the, in the queue, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on personnel from board members? Any public comment on personnel items? All right, item 10, enrollment. Any public comment on enrollment? Curriculum and instruction.
Yes, Mr. Scott, we had a pretty short meeting today, we got an update on a possible YNCA partnership for summer programming. We, we're not ready to do it yet, but in the past, you know, we, I don't know if we remember the Blazer summer, it's an attempt to, like, you know, kind of create something where we can have camps over the summer for kids, for, um, we don't really know at this point what the, what it will look like if we have it, but the folks at the YCA have asked us to put a survey out to the folks in Boone and see what they would like this to look at, look like, so that we can kind of start to shape what a summer program would look like. The two buildings that we would be looking at probably doing, the intermediate center and the middle school, not necessarily specifically for those age groups, but those are just the, the buildings that are probably best suited to, you know, a, having enough outer space and having enough inner space on when it's hot, things like that. inner space on when it's hot and things like that. And we don't know if it will be the whole summer or if it'll be cut into different chunks, where there'll be like, you know, three weeks of doing this kind of specific activity and another month of doing something else, or if it would just be the whole summer. That's, that's kind of what the survey is for. And which is, that was just information, and if, if we can get, continue those discussions, we might be able to do it by this coming summer. We, the next, the only next thing was, was the actual addendum to the, the agenda edit for the Nominance Program. That, that cost includes, as it says on the, on the invoice that's attached, we're currently on a one-year contract for the high school for Nominance, for, you know, helping kids choose career paths. And this will now be, the new contract is for the high school and the middle school for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. And as you saw, we were able to get them to come down a little bit on the price, about nine thousand dollars.
So, any question about the Y M C A program, I could?
The one that doesn't make this year?
Yes. So, the Blazer Summer was designed to be a fundraiser for us. Is the Y M C A program supposed to be a fundraiser or two, or is it rest of Friday's days?
That would be a revenue for them, I believe, so I don't, that, that is something that would have to be contractually discussed, you know, what, how, what we would be. I just mentioned that that was the last time we had summer, summer camp that went all summer.
So, I, I think we probably would have a discussion of whether we're going, whether we want to at least break even on it, whether it worked or whether...
Discussion is very preliminary, there's no, there's no even contract.
At this point, just trying to get some input from the community on the type of program that they would like to see.
I would also reach out to the township, they, they brought back their summer, summer program, I think last year or two years ago. Started to celebrate they want to compete with township.
The borough has one as well, and they compete with each other.
I can't remember exactly what, they could provide something different, you know?
That, that's part of the, the attempt to reach out to the community to see what, what, you know, not just offer the same thing maybe that the townships, the township and borough offer, but maybe find out if there's something that we can do differently.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to let us work together with the municipalities, is instead of trying to work against each other, so that's all.
Yeah, the Y M C A has been doing these for a long time, and they, they actually used to run the one that was run at the, at the intermediate center in the, in the aughts.
Any other questions from board members on curriculum and instruction? Thank you, Mrs. Alton. Any public comment on curriculum and instruction? Extracurricular?
Yes, we had on, after the third, a couple items that we had, we talked about the fall sports update, appears that the numbers are fairly similar to where they were previous year. We'll see if this winter, if there was any uptick based on having just one fee for participation. So, we'll look at it year over year and see if there's any differences for that. Talked about the winter coaches, the winter coaches are in place, except for the two that you noticed that are still open, and hopefully they're filled. The first day of winter sports is eleven, the number of the eighteenth, so maybe get them in place. Talked about the uniform replacement schedule, apparently some of the money for funding the uniforms, the five-year schedule that we laid out wasn't in the budget. Two of the football and volleyball, money was there, but I forgot what the third sport was, and that was not there. So, I'm just curious as to how we're getting, I believe something else is missing from the budget too, from the athletic budget, so I'm not sure what happened with getting that into the budget as, because we had five-year schedule laid out for uniform placement, we all agreed to, and one of the teams didn't make it as a question.
George Smith gave me all this information, all the numbers, he's the one that took his budget together.
Well, he gave me a spreadsheet, it's a spreadsheet that he gave you, one of the teams, it wasn't in there.
Yeah, that's what he put in the budget, because he put his own budget together.
Which team?
I don't know, I don't have a spreadsheet in front of me, we shouldn't, doesn't, isn't getting it replaced here, just that, what are you running for, so. And I, I have to talk, I mean, I have something else, I believe that she, there's something else that was expected to be in the budget, wasn't there, I'll have to check there.
They do have the money on fund twenty-nine?
I know, fund twenty-nine.
That's the booster money?
Well, yeah, this was specifically the money that we budgeted for, we agreed.
Right, I'm just saying that, George Smith, he gave me the numbers, because the administrators actually put their budget together and forwarded on me.
Just that it's not there. And we had a conversation, middle school uniforms is something that came up, that we had not budgeted to replace, and there were quite a few stories this past year of, you know, unacceptable uniforms, so it's something that we're taking the majority of them, seeing what we need to budget to replace the middle school uniforms. We've gone years without replacing them, and there was some horror stories from the fall.
What's, what's the, so, the department heads submit their budget, like, what's the process once they do that? Like, they submit them to you, and then what happens?
I, actually, the principals are submitting to Preston, and Preston's reviewing with the principals to make sure they're aligned with the curriculum. The administrators, now we have a new facilities person, so I'll be putting his budget together and the transportation budget based on the contract, so I'll be helping him with it this year. But typically, that person will put it together and pass it on to me. I look at it for reasonableness, I would expect to find details to be done, like, everything that, that department needs.
So, you're looking for major changes?
I am looking for major changes, making sure there's no fluctuations that don't seem appropriate, that can't be explained before I pass it on to the board.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, again, like, so, something got admitted, I'm sure there's stuff that got admitted at the building level, if there's no one going through them and checking them before they get submitted. You know, so, I think it's, again, even if it's someone from their, their own building that, you know, is familiar with the budget, it doesn't have to be, you know, one of you guys, it can just be, it's always good to have a second set of eyes, you know?
That's why they weren't defining their budget, even in Skyward this year, they had to define, because they're still in zero-based budgeting, they have to define what makes up that number.
Would Skyward point out changes to them as they're entering them?
They can see the line entering their budget on the screen, they can actually see the year prior, two years back.
Okay, so they can see.
They can see exactly if there's any anomalies, and then... It actually, it'll, it'll see it.
It's not gonna tell you that...
No, I'm just thinking like, you know, if you have like a TurboTax like UI where it like compares from the previous year and tells you...
They're gonna be able to see it.
Last year you had this, this year you're not putting it in, why, you know, kind of thing? But they will, if, whatever they're entering, they will be able to see what was there last year.
It's right on the screen, right where they're entering, they see right to that side, or that side they can see, so they'll be able to remember where.
Yeah, I mean, if nothing else, maybe it'd be good to have some kind of set of best practices for the folks who are entering that stuff, so they know to look, like, you know, I don't, just tell them, hey, make sure when you're entering the stuff, that you're comparing it to last year, so that you're not missing anything.
They have to go over that in training, the administrators in the last meeting.
Okay, I have two other highlights, the championship banner saga continues from two thousand eighteen, where we won two county championships in two thousand eighteen, bowling and softball. Apparently, the bowling banner has finally been ordered to receive, but the softball banner has fallen through the cracks again. And at one point, George said that it was on its way, and so I have no idea, it hasn't been ordered, I think it's been taken care of now, but it is two thousand eighteen, and it's almost two years later, a year and a half now.
So, can we order it?
I'm hoping it's being ordered, I, I ask every month.
So, who, is that the F I D R order, is your responsibility? Did she, did she say she was ordering it?
At the last meeting, yeah. And then the last item is, has to do with security events. Apparently, we have a fairly light security budget, and I think we have twenty-seven dollars budgeted for winter security, and the thought is that that is not sufficient, that for some events, we could use some additional staffing. I, like, big high school basketball games, looking back to add an additional person for some of the events.
Certain games that are more informative, some activity.
Well, is there, I mean, is there, I would imagine, is there some kind of regulation as far as like, if you have an event at your school, you know, you're gonna have a thousand people there, you need to have X number of folks in security? Like, you could have no security if you wanted to?
I'm, I'm not sure if there's any requirements of...
Not even like P I double A, or they don't even have any requirements for that?
It's up to our discretion at school.
Do we have a best practice, like, do we have a guideline that we follow, as far as like, you know, one per however many?
I mean, that's...
Like, we have an idea how would our attendance at these events, right?
It depends on who the team is, who's, who they're bringing in, so, I mean, I, I don't know, it would fluctuate from year to year and half, sport, they've had a sport event.
Events, teams that I would think need extra, I mean, maybe our research officer can, can come in, there's extra a couple nights to, to help out, I don't know, or somebody in the administration. Do we have a history of altercation that we weren't able to control with the...
I think there was some concerns from this fall, yeah, there were two incidents, we had additional security.
You know, in some of the rivalry games, you know, I'll say when, you know, sometimes when Nexter's here, some of those, some of those games can get a little chippy.
I remember government from last year, we had the, or I guess that was two years ago.
And administration is at those, at those events, so, in the building, building.
You got it?
They're, they're there.
He's got it.
I got it.
You got it?
Quick question, I recall one, you know, at Exter, they usually bring in the police, I'm like, really?
I think we had some of that for football games, too. Yeah, I mean, it, it could be an additional request for expense, I think it's twenty-six dollars an hour to add to security versus...
Any other questions for extracurricular? Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation.
The transportation side of it, Klein just came to the meeting, just kind of did an intro, there really wasn't anything to discuss in regards to transportation in this meeting. We did talk about the Amity Township Park Agreement, but it sounds like the things that we talked about were already worked out. The boosters purchased the dishwasher, of course. There was a discussion on Birdsborough Baseball Field, and we need some clarification on some items that need to be repaired. Concrete bid results, there was two bids, and I believe we're looking for clarification from Mr. Subers on one of those bids. There was an energy contract discussion, I believe I G S was chosen, is that correct?
I G S, yes.
Yep, and it was like a hundred thousand dollars savings or something like that.
It was close to that, but I don't think it was that exact.
Nice job, thank you, you did a lot of work on that, that was a really great job, thank you. There was an H B A C discussion in regards to the gym, the auditorium, auxiliary gym, and upgrading more controls, but there was no dollars provided. Fry shaft, there was a decision in that meeting that we would try to keep it versus, it's less to put a roof on it to keep it for future use than it would be to tear it down. There's power and block and foundations and all the other things is already there already, so the decision was to put a roof on it. Believe we estimated somewhere around twenty-five hundred dollars to do it, but I'm not sure we were able to be a bid on that. An R F P for snow removal, they were gonna check to, there was a concern about having another salt bin, so there was somebody's gonna check to the township to see if we can share their new bin, apparently there's some extra room in it, maybe, maybe not. If not, Alderson's getting a price, Alderson's landscaping was just priced for one, and then they would share, they agreed to share in the cost, because it would save them time driving back and forth. It was decided that calcium's a little bit more per storm, but it would certainly save the concrete, and we're spending a lot, a lot of money in concrete this year, and so putting salt down on fresh concrete would not make it last real long, so that was the decision, we don't think part of that, or, and then last but not least, D A, Daniel and High School Yearbook is donating approximately twenty thousand dollars to put in a youth courtyard in front of the schools, a patio, walkway, they had a whole design put out for it, picnic tables, it's supposed to be, it's really gonna be nice, I have a great picture of it, and that's what we have for the facilities and transportation. I have to do a follow-up, I know we had talked about it in the meeting, I, I think maybe this year we're kind of where we're at, but I'm pending for next year, so I know, you know, when we went out to bid for the, the snow removal, you know, we had the hardware, the year, our previous, you know, custodial group did the shoveling, but I know when we went out to bid, that was kind of a gray area, so I'm wondering if going, I think this year we're kind of, I think, altering character, right? So, is there any option for next year, did that resolve, or is it, is it what it is?
It is what it is.
Was it just not...
Until the concrete, concrete, so, the contracts are renegotiated, we already have interstate, and that plan is in place.
Was that just not in the R F P or not in the contract?
Well, it was, I think it was more assumed, because we went for G C A, it was fed off of the job descriptions of the custodian. When we were negotiating, when all that was going on with interstate, I don't know that the job descriptions were even put in there, it was just kind of what they did, because I know there was traction in that cafeteria on the fields, there were several miscellaneous items, and this just happened to be one of them, so, have to pay for it twice.
Any, as far as...
It was in the G C A contract, but it's not in the interstate, so now Halter will be doing it.
Have we gotten any preliminary numbers around the savings we are expecting from the busing, around the fuel and all that?
No, it's, we're, I mean, we're since November, we're fairly early on that, we're not sure, it's gonna, I mean, we don't, really didn't visit that and weren't planning on it until we get past the midpoint of the year here.
I mean, they could tell us...
We say, we had savings on a bus, because we, we dropped off two buses district-wide, so there's some of those savings, but we haven't been able to, we really didn't calculate any fuel savings yet or anything like that.
But they could tell us how much fuel we use each month, year over year, right? I mean, they could tell us September, October, November, here's what we used last year, here's what we...
Yeah, we can tell, and also Joelle did make the mention that when she was actually paying the bills on a monthly basis, we know that there's a reduction in the overage for the mileage, so that should decrease the fuel amount, but nobody sat down and actually put a number two at this point, because it is early on.
Yeah. But we know, we know from redoing the routes, the actual mileage compared to what it was before.
It's less.
Is less.
It's down, so there's no overage, so you're not...
So, I guess what I'm getting at is, if there, I would like to see, obviously, we're not gonna see it soon, but why, why wouldn't we have at least first two months of the year and tell me that there's been a drop from last year?
We can, we can get that, I mean, I...
I mean, I can't imagine they don't have access to that, because they're paying a fuel bill every month, I'm sure. I'm saying, they're, but they're, they're ordering it, and then, so, anyway, I just...
That would be a matter of putting together the numbers.
Like, the mileage is one thing, but we don't, right, we, we get a...
We were paying overages.
For the mileage going over what we were, so we're saving some, some...
Some there, we're also saving money on the buses, and of course, mileage...
If the board's interested, I mean, we, I could put that in my, my update at the end of the week to see what the difference is from last year at this time to this year at this time.
I'm just curious.
Get a general, we can get a general number like that, yeah? More detail will take a little more time.
I mean, I, just a grand toll for the year over year can't be too hard to get to. They should have that, they should have that. Right. It better be, right? Anyway, all right. Any other facilities and transportation, any other questions from board members? Any public comment on facilities or transportation? Finance?
Yes, Mr. Scott, we did meet last Thursday, there was some, so, myself from the committee, so we couldn't make any recommendations, Mr. Miller, attend. Mr. Miller attended as a member of the public. We had a brief discussion about renewing with Portonoff, which you see, finance, six B, to renew with them for collections of past due tax. So we did, we went away from the county a couple of years ago, Saints seem to be happy with how they're performing, so. We were, we discussed it, we can't recommend it from the committee side, but we discussed it, so no, no issue there. Continue to make our ID eight point whatever percent collection rate. So that was a brief discussion, we also had a brief discussion of something the board had discussed for where we are for percentage of budget throughout the year, so we know, you know, how, how we are with what was budgeted, you know, at the beginning of the year, you know, sometimes we have an expense that all the expenses in the beginning of the year. Now, so if you have a hundred percent in the beginning of the year, you'd expect you're not going over. When you get to April, May, and you're at fifty percent, then those things might jump out at you as questions of why we, we budgeted something, the amount, but I know a couple of board members from rich didn't see, you know, as we progressed through the year, what the percentage was of the budget used. So Ms. Olson then mentioned her, within the treasury board, there are things that essentially give you the same information, might, the Saints, there's a button in Sky where she can press, you know. No, just kidding, but she's gonna put something together, just, you know, let Mary see what you think it'll be for the new board, so. The bulk of the discussion was the, of course, the budget. The budget model has changed from Seattle, everything from the revenue expenditure side of the, of your, your five-year budget now has was changed from what we saw last Thursday. I know it looks kind of, all the information is in here. You'll notice towards the bottom where it says mileage, you see the increase, it says zero. We couldn't make a recommendation from finance, so, and, and I'd like to have that be an item that we discuss at the board level, so we're not making a recommendation to Mr. Rathke's point. So that's something we need to address before we vote at the end of the month. And did I miss anything, Miss Haynes? So, so this, this would be, this is gonna be the new board model going forward. Clearly, as part of the onboarding process for the new board members, this is going to be something that needs to be covered because they're trying to be hidden right away from, in January, so. But at least everything's in one page and it's available, so. Conclusive report, any questions?
Any board questions on finance? Any public comment on finance? Policy in view?
Yes, Mr. Scott. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through all the policies, but I just wanted to kind of do a quick oversight. We have eleven policies on first reading this evening. Like to highlight policies two oh one and two oh four, which will go into effect for twenty to twenty-one school year. Basically puts in policy changes in attendance loss. Mandatory attendance was eight seventeen, now it is going to be six to eighteen. Also want to highlight policy two two two, which is an attempt to help to deal with the vaping epidemic that we are facing right now in the schools. Students will now have to pay a twenty-five dollar fee if they're caught, so their devices can be tested for illegal drugs. I hope that this is gonna deter usage. Any questions?
And that was my only, I saw the twenty-dollar fee, I was curious what, but the committee thought about that?
We covered the cost of having it tested, it's pretty much almost a watch, Mr. Hurley, it said.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's, there's much in there for.
Yeah, it's not a revenue, it's.
Yeah, that is a. And we actually, do actually hoping, I guess, we'll actually pay it.
But, but testing it is, because, I mean, the, the, the penalty to the student is significantly different if they find cannabis products versus, versus nicotine.
And also you could add that to their, what, graduation fees or whatever.
What happens to the device?
They confiscate it.
I don't think it's given back.
They don't give it, they don't give it back?
No.
Very sad.
I think it's great, but I can't ima, I mean, some parents are probably not gonna feel that way.
Kids taking this email. I'm sure that's a pretty easy discussion.
Any other board questions on policy? Any public comment on policy? Technology?
Yeah, we had our first meeting in a while, just to kind of update us a little bit. Home communications update, they have pricing now, it's in the design phase. And one of the things they just realized was with the new system, they'll be able to reduce the number of analog lines, we don't have to have all the analog lights previously, so there's about a fifty percent savings in that one piece. All the hardware replacement schedule overview that we did was something that was put into the five-year plan, so it's staying right in that budget, replacing desktops, laptops, iPads for faculty. Additional items that were in there, but they felt that they were able to put them in the budget. Savings in other areas were, there's a hundred projectors in the middle school and elementary area of school that need to be replaced because of an HDMI, HDMI connection. They were up for replacement next year, they're just moving it forward a year. The middle school one-on-one iPads, a second internet connection, and the removing switches in one of the school, I can't remember what school it was, I didn't have it in my notes, but they're not gonna be needing to replace them, so they're reducing the number of switches that they're gonna need going forward in terms of replacement.
What's the, the projector and HDMI connection issue?
Devices now, we have HDMI connection to go into the projector, so.
So, I mean, can they buy an adapter?
They'll be up for replacement anyway, so we're just pulling it forward a year.
So is any projector still gonna be not working anymore?
I didn't ask the question, so.
Hey, I'm sure, I mean, maybe can't buy an adapter, right?
Okay, absolutely, I have one of that. Yeah, I have one, too.
So I'm just wondering if that needs to be done. So we were saving money, but we're just, we're spending on something else, so.
I mean, they're, they're scheduled for replacement.
Next year.
But why, are they, they're not functioning? According to us?
I mean, I, I mean, all, all computers are, I mean, I get it, a lot, you know, both computers perhaps can't support the current, current software and that a lot of stuff, but.
Yeah, projectors.
It's really a question we're gonna have to ask Scott.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
I'll fall back on it, yeah, no, I mean, I know sometimes both replacement can be hired, some of these orders, stuff.
Hire to replace the old stuff.
They really are, I'm sure all the different reasons, but that was the main one, the down the HDMI, is that what you remember?
Yeah, the, the IT department had a, a desire to get everything on a certain schedule, different pieces of equipment on a different, different type of schedule for replacement. We, we were actually, we had several years where we didn't replace anything, and so we had lots of stuff to replace, but we're actually getting close to actually getting our stuff on the replacement schedule that is desirable and recommended at the, for the amount of use that our, you know, our stuff gets. And I believe it was the elementary school.
And middle school.
And middle schools that, that, they, they said are, don't, that they don't work because, because we don't have the right, I guess it's not, we, they, we need HDMI cables, is that right? I don't remember, but, but the fact that we were already trying to approach, like, replacing the units on, on an interval that is appropriate for the use that they're getting meant that to us it didn't seem to make much of a difference as to the why's, as long as we were approaching actually, you know, getting some of the dead, dead and older equipment out of here. It doesn't mean you can't get answers to those questions, Scott.
That's an easy one, I'll email Scott, good answer back. Good one, didn't think about the adapter. The data center had a couple of circular replacements that were scheduled. And campus is December build for the twenty, twenty-one school year launch. The middle school professional development, one of the big highlights were the middle school one-on-one iPads. Some of the high school students came out, shared some of the tools and tricks of, that they've experienced, and so it's a big, big thank to, to those students that came out and it's a tremendous advance for the teachers and faculty that are there now being able to not have to pave down that road that's already been paved.
I would imagine some of the kids could probably help the teachers out, some of this stuff.
What I understand is a pretty big help to them, faculty really appreciate it. The digital document storage department's going well, they, they start testing. And then, of course, on the budget was the board director's papers workflow with the chromebooks and the board docs.
Any other board questions on technology? Any public comment on technology? All right, old business? Any questions on item one? Any public comment on old business? Any new business? I have one item.
I'd like to circle back on one question, too, on the budget, I'm trying to clarify what we're actually going to propose as a preliminary budget, I know we had the conversation that Mr. Rathke raised this question about, whether it's going to be the, to the max with the exceptions, but I can't find the attachment, so I'm getting to the attachment, the spreadsheet has a zero percent increase in mileage, so what exactly are we going to present?
That's what we.
That's what we need to discuss.
Okay.
We gotta vote on it, I mean. I have the opinion, if you wanna talk about, wanna talk about it now, we can talk about it now. I hope the same opinion as Mr. Rathke, but, I mean, I don't think we're gonna qualify computers, clearly, so the other one is special education. I don't know what we, what we're even available to, so. You know, with the three-point, something for four percent increase built in, you know, my opinion is we stay within the Act One index.
Especially that we have front of us, doesn't have the three point four.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have any.
I think the resolution was on, was in the.
It's eleven, number three, I can't find it, eleven twenty-five attachment.
I was crazy when I pulled up Google, it was, I thought it was in there.
Well, regardless of what we have, I mean, we, we, since as long as I've been here, we've always put the max in knowing that we'll land somewhere else, but at least you have the option, if you don't put it in there, you don't have the option.
Yeah, in this case, the percentage is a lot higher.
Yeah.
For the Act One index is much higher, which would include, well, more than include what was available to this for exception.
Yeah, so then, what would be the max mileage increase then? Max? Well, last year was like point nine three? So you're saying, your, your, your personal feeling is?
Well, initially on this budget, when we discussed it on Thursday, it had point seven five in, and I asked that it be taken out, because, you know, we don't know what the discussion is going to be.
Yeah. Well, you have to have a number in there for next, for the voting, I mean.
That's something June discussion.
But we have to have something like that.
Yes.
To reach now.
Meaning that we have people there to recommend to any number, that's, that's why we're making it out.
Are you, you keep, you keep naming me, you keep giving me all guilt, because I wasn't there until.
Hey, the guilt fits.
Yeah, sent a reminder and made a phone call and several texts and.
Did he let you know, did he let you know he wasn't gonna be there?
Well, I think he got a response, Ms. Olson got a response back saying, I seem to have forgotten to do.
Something, I play, but I'm a short timer, just days.
What is it?
He said two minutes after we adjourned, I think we forgot. The allowable, it allows us to go up one point, one point oh zero seven three, which will bring the mil to, mileage to thirty-two point six five seven nine.
I don't have, I mean, I don't have a good, I, I understand your rationale for not walking out of here having some, some big possible tax increase hanging over the board and the district, but I don't understand why you all, I mean, you, you know, you guys are leaving and, you know, we're, we're, you know, we've always given ourselves enough room in case there was some sort of catastrophe that we could, we could tax as much as was possible, and we have never done that, but we've always given ourselves the ability to do that. And I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't do that now.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not advocating. I'm not advocating against doing that.
I'm on the both side.
I, I understand, but I don't, I haven't heard.
I don't want to.
I haven't heard a compelling reason to not do it, since the, having the ability to do something doesn't mean.
Well, I mean.
And, and we, and we, this is the way we've, this is the way we approved this resolution pre, you know, real budgeting time period, you know, every, every year for three years, as far as I know. Two of them I was involved with, but the other one, I think that you guys did it as well, and then you did.
Well, we should put the total in as, with the max in as a placeholder, and then someone's gotta make a motion anyway, it's not like, it's not like if it's on the agenda that that's it, I mean, it's put the full in and then someone makes a motion and we vote, and if we don't, you know, if, if there's enough that don't wanna go max, I, I mean, personally, I don't know why you wouldn't, if you're not, you know.
I just don't know why the discussion is about, like, you know, oh, that seems high, right now, specifically, I don't know why that's the discussion right now, when it's just about what, what we have the ability to do if needed, not just because we want things.
When would we know?
What would we know if we're eligible for any type of special education exception?
Well, the exceptions are filed in January, it's kind of almost an after the fact, you're gonna know that by the way you vote on what the mileage on the twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, I don't, we just put it in there and someone makes a motion and we move, go for, we go from there.
So moved?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I understand, but right now it says zero, so we know where.
So, so.
I'm saying.
No, no, so typically what we, what typically what we, we've done in the past is we, we voted the preliminary budget to, to, up to the Act One index, plus the ability to add any exceptions that the state might give us, and the only two available exceptions right now are computers and special education. So, so you won't know what that is until sometime in the spring, or they'll come back and say, okay, you know, Dan Good now, because of your circumstances, you can increase your special ed, because of your special ed costs, you can now go over the Act One index.
Generally, because the special education costs are much higher.
So, you know, so, so by adopting the preliminary to go to Act One plus exceptions, you're, you're allowing the, the district as much flexibility as possible. My only thought was, again, going back over and looking at what our Act One index is, you know, my mind, if you can't make the budget work with, with a maximum of three point four percent increase, then, then something's wrong, the district's not doing, not doing the job of controlling costs like they should.
Then we're gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting to post this meeting.
Oh, yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so.
You're, you're just, you're just giving ourselves.
And it's a good, it's a good point you bring up, I.
So, and that's possibly an argument is.
You're overdoing it on purpose.
You know, as, as a, you know, board member, I, I never wanted to be handcuffed, I don't wanna handcuff the future, the future board does when I come on here, so that's my other, my other side to where I'm at here, with my, my.
Four number comes from.
Same.
Same, yeah.
So, let's put it in.
Yes.
Full amount.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll go from there, so I'll make, so I'm gonna make a motion, and then we can, we can adjust if, if desired. And is that agreeable with everybody? We gotta put something in there, and.
Well, if you, if you vote to say. Well, if you, if you vote to stay within the, the Act One, then you can't go, then you can't choose, you go over.
Correct. So I'm saying, put everything in and then, you know, I, I, for one, will, will support putting it all in. Just because, again, you have the flexibility to take it away, but we've not, we've, we've never not done that, so.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, so.
Yeah.
Put in, we don't necessarily use the whole thing, right?
Well, anyone disagree?
If I wouldn't really find the attachment, I'm gonna save those.
Well, no, I mean, we're gonna have to have the discussion one way or the other, so.
Yeah.
I, I'd rather just get it in, get it in the, the budget so we can have the, the vote next.
No, that's why it's written.
And before you vote on this, I could actually get you an exception of what that's close. I'm not gonna say it's perfect, but close, because they do have spreadsheets on there. So I can give you an idea when that is before you-
Only for, there's no PERS, there's-
There is not gonna be any PERS.
Cause we, yeah, we just transferred money out of PERS.
PERS disappeared in eighteen nineteen.
So what other exceptions besides special?
Special, just said.
That's it. So that's the only-
But that one's gone, PERS is gone, the only one left is special. I think it was like almost five hundred, we budgeted it as a five hundred thousand when I was doing that, just the spreadsheets they have out there. And I think it came in at just about four hundred thousand, so.
Alright, anybody opposed to place order? The other item is we need to solicit for replacing Mr. Durso's seat as it was not part of the election process. So is there, is everybody comfortable with us advertising and getting that ball rolling?
Well, my other question is, advertising these days, does that mean you're, you're gonna advertise in the Eagle, which is a pathetic paper, and it costs a lot of money for, then why are you reading it?
Well, we just do.
I, I mean, you know, we do, are reporting the news, some of the works and going on, but, you know, I, I'd almost rather see us spend money on, on social media to put it out there on, on, you know.
I agree with that.
That's fine, put it on the website, we can, put it on Facebook.
Subscription to look at the Eagle anyway.
Yeah, well, we, we have our face, we have our district Facebook and, you know, all that stuff.
Is there any legal requirements?
No.
They just have to be a resident?
No, for advertising, there isn't.
I had to take this way, Facebook as a, as a, as a, as a factor in there.
Sure, all of us will be diligent trying to find a suitable replacement? Sweet, be a, be a great board member.
How long do you want to leave it posted for, till filled or?
I would say until we get, till we get responses, right? Cause, cause, I mean, the way it goes though, isn't it, we first have to get someone from Birdsboro. If we get no solicitations from-
Birdsboro or Amity Precinct one.
Birdsboro or Amity Precinct one.
So precinct one, and if we don't get anyone after so long, then we can open it to all this, all precincts.
Yeah, what's done in the past is, you know, if, by the next, I guess by the next board meeting, that, if there's more than one, invite them to come and vote, but if, but if there's only one, we can decide if we wanna leave it open longer. I guess it depends.
I don't think you can, you can go have March, I think it's got to be for that.
No, Amity, Amity Precinct one is within, is within, oh, region three.
Yeah, but it's not the same, it's expanded.
Yeah.
Oh, no. No, I meant, I meant the timeframe. He means, he meant the-
Oh, oh, I saw your name, they extended it to the-
No, I thought you had, the, you had to go within the region.
You do.
It hasn't.
But if you don't get anybody from that region-
It's gotta be from that region.
So what if you don't get anybody?
We'll be sad. Then we can go through the, the Eagle, which, which Mr. Rathke was on record saying.
Yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll make you-
Is that on record?
I'm gonna check with Mr. Subers on that, cause I swear you could go outside if you don't-
I think if it continues to be like this, you're having some, you know, difficult, you're gonna see, you know, Mr., I think you were on the board when we changed how our-
No, that, that happened, that happened, I think, a year or, a year or so before I got on the board. But, but, I mean, I, I know the conversation back then was possibly going to some of that.
There was some, you know, having-
There was like a lot of, that's the point.
You know, there was having one for weeks, Amity, Birdsboro and Union, and then having six at March.
It didn't matter.
So it can be from Birdsboro one, Birdsboro-
It'd be good to put a map on it, some people, so they even know what region they're in. Or, or in the communication, like, here are the, here are the polling locations in your region.
Let's see what happens before we solve a problem we don't have. How's that?
It's advertising the region three.
Ms. Albright, did you have something you wanted to say?
I don't.
Are you sure? I felt like, I felt like you did.
Okay, I had, I said something, but I'm not gonna say it.
Oh, okay. Any other, uh, new business? Any presentations by public on any issues at all? Alright, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.